Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, June 9, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for being here this evening or joining us remotely. We have a few councilors joining us remotely tonight as well. And so we'll get started tonight by reading our roll, please.
Councilmembers Kylie?
Here.
Knightzert?
Here.
Selberg? Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Staley?
Here.
Brecky?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
All right. Here to give our invocation this evening on the phone is Dr. Ramesh Kumar Singh. He is president of the Hindu Temple of Sueland. And so, Dr. Singh, are you on the phone with us?
Yes, I am here.
All right. The floor is yours, sir. Take it away.
Thank you. Namaste. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Hindu community in Sioux Falls, it is my pleasure to do invocation this evening for city council meeting. I am very thankful to the mayor and city council members for giving me this opportunity. As you may know, all Hindu scriptures were either written or composed in Sanskrit, one of the oldest languages of the world. So first, I am going to do my prayer in Sanskrit, and then I will translate in English. Sarve bhavantu shukhinaha. Sarve santu niramaya. Sarve bhadrani pashyantu. Ma keshid dukhvaagavet. Om, shanti, shanti, shanti. Love. May all be happy. May all be free from illness. May all see what is right. May no one suffer. Be there. Peace, peace, peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Singh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and...
All right. Thank you, Dr. Singh. I think I also might have heard Counselor Selberg. Did you join us, counselor?
Correct. I am present. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to item number four. Approval of our consent agenda. Look for any changes or motions there.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Knightzert.
All right. Motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Counselor Knightzert. Any discussion on the consent agenda, council? All right. We'll take a vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Bring us over to item thirty-four, our regular agenda. Look for a motion on that.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Counselor Sale. Any discussion on our regular agenda, council? All right. We'll vote on that one, please.
Councilmembers Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
All right. That passes eight to zero. We're at the general public input portion of our agenda tonight. And as a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person, and in total lasts no more than thirty minutes. During general public input, the public is welcome to speak on any topic that does not appear later on the agenda. For regular agenda items following general public input, comments are limited to three minutes, unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. This time, I'd like to invite members of the public forward for general public input. And clerk, please note our time is seven oh five. Good evening.
Good evening. It's been a while since I've given observations, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople. There's a lot of things being said around the world, and particularly in our government lately. I always like to listen to what people have to say and how they say it. I was disconcerted when our fine governor used a number, seventy-five percent is what we have curtailed the exposure of people to the COVID virus. When that first went out, we only had a thousand cases. Now we've got five thousand. Seventy-five percent curtailment, that would mean that we should have twenty thousand. I noticed that our fine governor has not used that number anymore because it's a useless number unless you're comparing it with a solid fact. I was disconcerted when the comments after the people displaying their need to talk and try to express their concern, when the first words out of the governor's mouth were, "Mobbs shall not rule", instead of saying, "I support people right to talk, but I don't care for the way some people have conducted themselves." I like some of the primary ads. Very slick, very nice. And if you listen to them carefully, they will, whoever was running them, will protect us from everything in the world except the Republican Party. I'll leave you with a couple of comments that I've noticed from people who are much more intelligent than anybody seated here in this room. It's advice. Ben Franklin said, "Failure to prepare is preparing to fail." And you might say this is not exactly what I had in mind by saying the smartest people might not be in this room, but another one said, "If you can't explain it simply, you don't understand it." Albert Einstein. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
All right. Thank you, Bob.
Stay healthy.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else tonight? Good evening.
Greetings. I'm David Zalkitis, and I'm waiting here. I'm David Zalkitis, and I've got two topics tonight. The short, first one's going to be pretty short. There's a rally that I'd like to give, but it's being postponed. The problem is, my permit application has neither been approved, nor rejected, nor recommended changes for. So I'm kind of wondering what's going on there. It's been about a week, and I would have expected some kind of result about a week ago. But if anybody wants to come whenever I do have this thing, let me know, because I'm looking for speakers of diverse backgrounds, including, you know, white people, because that's part of diversity. Topic number two is progressive housing. Okay. So what does that mean? Well, lots of things. Go ahead. One problem that we have all the time is the lack of affordable housing, and it's getting worse over the years for various reasons. Okay. So some of the problems that we have is that income has been static over decades for a lot of people, while housing costs have increased substantially. And that means that, you know, it's hard to buy a house because you can't really afford it. And that's not really any accident. And the only way you can address this problem is by putting up a mobile home park. They're cheap, affordable, look all right sometimes. But the typical government approach to systemic lack of affordable housing is to pretend you're interested, make a lot of noise, maybe make a little bit of subsidized housing, and then let everything else go. Let me have housing bubbles and stuff like that. Zoning is kind of a related issue, and that encourages sometimes economic segregation, because you've got all these distinct communities of one particular income level, and they're segregated in that sense. Oh, back up a little bit. But I've kind of thinking that we might need a new zoning level, residential compact for tiny houses, because they could be more affordable than big expensive houses. Low-impact development is a really cool concept, trying to be gentle with earth, with water permeable pavement, keeping trees, things like that. Stand off a floodplain. Now, I've got a development project in mind that incorporates a lot of these wonderful ideas. And I'll introduce that very briefly here, because I only have a little bit of time. One of the problems on the property is that there's junk, stone, but that presents opportunity. Ah. Okay. So here's this place here that I'm looking at, and you can see that there's a zoning map that's mostly residential duplex with a little bit of wreck on the side. It's in the floodplain that you can see there. So we've got to be more careful. But there's some teeny-teeny houses and some bigger plots and quite a variety, and some parks, too. And I hope everybody enjoys nature, and I hope to do that, too, once I move in. So, good evening, everybody.
Thank you, David.
Good evening.
Nice to get back to normal, even though I've been lived at the last three months, anyway. I always tell people, you think Washington is corrupt, you don't have to go very far. Just come to our city. Come to Sioux Falls. We have one of the most corrupt city councils, and we do have a corrupt mayor. And I think that the august leader came right out and hit it right on the head, telling the truth on what happened last week. It's just amazing that you can be a Democrat and vote Republican, or you could be a Republican and get a Democratic ticket. It's amazing that people can come into a voting area that they've been voting for for the last thirty years, and all of a sudden, they got to go six miles away from where they're voting at. I talked to one person that was running a voting establishment, and now there, I think there's sixty-seven precincts. This was only one. They turned twenty-five away that he knew of, and every one of them people said that they're not going to vote. I wonder why? Wonder why? This was done deliberately, so people wouldn't go vote. Deliberately. And I think that this should be looked at. Why people were taken out of their voting, where they've been voting at for thirty years, why all of a sudden they're sent six miles away? Or why they're sent to a different church when they've been voting there? My daughter was one of them. My mom was in the, on the list twice. First, they said she was a Democrat, and now I'm a Republican. Well, it took them quite some time to figure out that, wow, she is a Republican. But she had to fight. And that wasn't the only one. There's so many people out there that just are sick and tired of how this election went. But you know, I'm sure there's a lot of city councilors here that say that was the best election we ever had. I'll tell you what, you're lying to yourself, every one of you. And I'll tell you what, corruption is so high in this city, it isn't even funny. And I really think that this city could run without a mayor, because the mayor is just a puppet to begin with.
Thank you. Good evening.
I want to address that rioting that happened, and I'm serious when I say this. The mayor and the chief of police was buffaloed by these organizers. Julian is being under investigation. Bany is being under investigation. There are organizers that are being under investigation with the state attorney's office. So when people come and want to protest and want to start a riot here, we can't be buffaloed by these people, mayor. When we have arrests coming in a couple of weeks, I want to ask the mayor and I want to ask the chief to publicly tell the citizens how in the hell did they get buffaloed and think that these educated black folks was the best protest we ever had. One organizer admitted to doing the protest and organizing the riot. I'm working very closely with the police department to make arrests. I shouldn't have to go to that extreme for that. When these arrests are going to be made, I'm sure a riot will turn out again, because there will be some angry people. So we can just wait for that riot to happen again. It is a shame of the African-American community in this community that was going to riot and fight the police and didn't do nothing. The police didn't do nothing about it. The police is very upset. I talked to one person in upper management and said, you know what? I thought my chief of police and the mayor would have been on our side. We saw straight through Mr. Julian and Bany, straight through it. We shouldn't have had to been there, and a rock missed my head by two inches. Where is our chief of police and our mayor? The police department saw straight through this. The chief of police, y'all want to know about the chief of police? I'm going to tell you. I'm going to put pressure on the mayor, and if it doesn't happen, we're going to get Christine on to do it. In budgeting, y'all put that the police get the body cameras, and the mayor can't tell me no difference. As of right now, we got an issue, and it's not a race issue. The mayor is against the body cameras. He's not putting in that budget. That's a sign of corruption. A sign of corruption is when the chief of police does, I believe, an accreditation program with the police department. That is corruption. Does it rise to the level of a riot? No. We have an issue with the police department. We have an issue with the chief. And nobody can do anything except the mayor put his foot down on the chief of police and get them body cameras and make that police chief be accredited a program here.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? All right, clerk, come on to our next item, please.
Item thirty-six, a resolution vacating lot H2 in tract one in Government Lots one and two in the northwest quarters, quarter of Section nineteen, Township one oh one, north range forty-eight west of the Fifth PM, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, a portion of Lot H2 in the abandoned railroad right-of-way, living with, lying within Government Lots one and two in the northwest quarter of Section nineteen, Township one oh one, north, range forty-eight west of the Fifth PM, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, a portion of Lot H4 in the abandoned railroad right-of-way, lying in portion of Lot H4 in the, pardon me. Government Lot one in the northwest quarter of Section nineteen, Township one oh one, north, range forty-eight west of the Fifth PM, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, a portion of Lot H5 in the abandoned railroad right-of-way, lying in Government Lot one in the northwest quarter of Section nineteen, Township one oh one, north, range forty-eight west of the Fifth PM, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, bounded by East Arrowhead Parkway and East Tenth Street, as shown on Exhibit A.
Hi, Kurt.
Thanks, Denise. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kurt Peppel with Engineering. This little chunk of right-of-way is comprised of several Hlots, as you can see in the description there. It is just a little bit east of Veterans Parkway and Arrowhead Parkway intersection on the east side of Sioux Falls. There's, if you're familiar with the area, there's used to be a little fireworks stand kind of out there. There's no road there today. It's just some Hlots that were acquired a long time ago. The property owner submitted the right-of-way vacation pursuant to South Dakota law and complies with the city vacation policy. The vacation limits are being coordinated with the future project on Arrowhead Parkway. We've looked at that pretty thoroughly. Neighborhood meeting was not required. There's no road there, no access or anything there today. Engineering does not have any concerns, and item thirty-seven will go along with this one, too, so you'll see a lot of the same information.
All right. Thank you, Kurt. Anyone from the public like to speak on this one tonight? All right, councilors, do you have any questions for Kurt on this?
I'll move to set the date of hearing for Tuesday, July seventh.
Second.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Sale. Any discussion on that, council? All right. Hearing done. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item thirty-seven, please.
A resolution vacating a portion of the East Tenth Street public right-of-way, as shown on Exhibit A.
Again, Kurt Peppel with Engineering. This little piece of Tenth Street is just to the north of the Hlots that we're just considering. There is a gravel road there today. Back up a couple of slides. This is the plan for the area, and so the Tenth Street cuts right through the middle of there. Tenth Street is not used very often, mostly some local traffic out there. This is Clint Ackerman's development, and that was, the preliminary plan was considered a while back and approved. So this is just kind of cleaning up the area and helping him develop that section there. The property owner just adjacent to the west has been contacted several times, and him and Clint are working very closely on this, and so some coordination things are happening there. So Engineering, again, doesn't have any concerns, and look for your support.
Thanks, Kurt. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, councilors, you got any questions for Kurt on this one?
Set the date of hearing for Tuesday, July seventh.
Second, Knightzert.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Knightzert on that. Discussion, council? All right. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
All right. That passes eight to zero. We'll move on to item thirty-eight.
A resolution vacating the West Seventeenth Street public right-of-way, bounded by the West Right-of-Way Line of South Grange Avenue to the East Right-of-Way Line of South Covell Avenue, as shown on the attached exhibit.
This, the right-of-way in question is West Seventeenth Street, just north of the Sanford campus in the kind of the central Sioux Falls there. Sayor Associates, on behalf of Sanford, submitted the right-of-way vacation pursuant to South Dakota law and complies with the city's street vacation policy. We've been working very closely with Sanford on this for several months, and I think they've done a great job of communicating with the neighborhood and the engineer's office and Planning and Development Services. Two neighborhood meetings were held last week via Zoom. Several people attended those. They had one in the morning. There was eight neighbors, and the one in the evening, there were ten neighbors. Some good discussion. Overall, the meetings, I thought, went very well, and Sanford has taken a few things into consideration that the neighborhood was concerned about. Engineering does not have any concerns with the proposed vacation.
All right. Thank you, Kurt. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Councilors, you got questions for Kurt on this?
Set the date of hearing for Tuesday, July seventh.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Counselor Sale on that. Any discussion, council? All right. I'll call for a vote, please.
Councilmembers Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item thirty-nine.
A resolution vacating the South Euclid Public Right-of-Way between the North Right-of-Way Line of West Seventeenth Street to the North Lot Lines of Lots nineteen and thirty-eight, Pitcher Edition, to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, as shown on Exhibit A.
This section of Euclid is just north of Seventeenth Street, which was item number thirty-eight. Again, Sayor Associates, working with Sanford, submitted the petition for South Dakota law and complies with the street vacation policy. All the same information was discussed at the Zoom meetings with the neighborhood, and again, I think Sanford has done a good job of working with the neighborhood and addressing some concerns. Engineering doesn't have any concerns with moving forward.
All right. Thank you, Kurt. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Councilors, you got any questions for staff on this one?
Set the date of hearing for Tuesday, July seventh.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Sale on that. Any final discussion? All right. Let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmembers Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero. Run item forty.
A resolution vacating the South Scarlet Oak Trail Public Right-of-Way between the South Right-of-Way Line of South Sugar Maple Drive to the South Lot Line of Lot eighteen and Block twenty-two of Arbor's Edge, in addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, as shown on Exhibit A.
The right-of-way in question here is in Arbor's Edge Edition, which is in east-central Sioux Falls, just north of Willow Run Golf Course. Norman Engineering, on behalf of the property owner, submitted the right-of-way vacation pursuant to South Dakota law and complies with the street vacation policy. Neighborhood meeting was not required. There is no street there currently. Vacating the right-of-way will aid in the development of the area. There's, the right-of-way will essentially become a private street and a, the Scarlet Oak Trail will continue further south as a private area, and new homes will be built down there. Engineering does not have any concerns with the proposed vacation.
Thanks, Kurt. Anyone from the public would like to speak to this item? All right, councilors, do you have any questions on this one for Kurt?
Set the date of hearing for Tuesday, July seventh.
Second. Thanks, sir.
All right. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Counselor Knightzert on that. Any discussion, council? All right. Let's vote on that, please.
Councilmembers Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right. That passes eight to zero, and we have one item of new business, item forty-one.
A motion declaring the results of the joint city of Sioux Falls, Sioux Falls School Board election held jointly with Lincoln and Minnehaha Counties on June second, two thousand and twenty.
Hey, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilors. So tonight is the official canvass. It's required by law within seven days of an election being held. So, but before I present the results, I do want to share some information about this, what I consider, and I think everyone would agree, a very unique election. Our goal for all elections is maintaining the integrity of the electoral process. This has been job one from the start. This is a key reason the city council requested, and the legislature ultimately passed, a law postponing all spring elections to June. As you recall, among the concerns at the time were voter participation, poll worker capacity, polling place supplies, and polling place availability. Up until March thirtieth, when this law was passed, we had already met statutory deadlines associated with an April election. We ordered ballots. We lined up workers, many which dropped out. We secured nearly fifty-four polling locations. We had lost and replaced seven of them, and we began absentee voting. We were able to collectively address the concerns expressed with an April election for a postponed election in June. Agreements with Lincoln and Minnehaha Counties provided for joint election, as you know, on June second. In Lincoln, over fifteen polling place workers were arranged for at thirteen precincts and six locations. In Minnehaha, there were over two hundred thirty election workers at forty-four locations, covering fifty-seven precincts. Moreover, the Minnehaha County Auditor arranged for well over eighty absentee workers on Election Day and seven Resolution Board members. Every single city department, to include council staff, played an integral role in each election, and I estimate a minimum of two hundred city employees directly supported the effort since last November, when we started planning in earnest, and of course, to a large degree, this past Tuesday and Wednesday. This includes... This includes everything from entering invoices, assisting with COVID measures, at polling places, ordering postcards, updating the web, moving supplies, and of course, answering the urgent call for assistance on Election Day. This election has truly been historic in so many respects, and there is a great deal to be proud of. Twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-five ballots were cast for this election, or over twenty-six percent of our registered voters. Let me put this in perspective. The city has held twenty-two elections since January nineteen ninety-five, when we entered this form of government. Eleven saw a higher percentage turnout, all but one of them were mayoral elections, the other one was a special election in two thousand and eleven. Only six of the twenty-two elections saw a higher number of ballots cast nominally. This election included the longest absentee voting period in our history, a full sixty-four days for citizens to contemplate their vote and to return their ballots, forty-seven hundred of which, of the fifteen and a half thousand or so that were returned, were returned within the week prior to this election. That's in addition to primary ballots that were being returned. Forty-seven days of that sixty-four provided for in-person absentee voting, eight hundred and ten people took advantage of that. The remaining absentee ballots were all mail ballots, returned through the mail or in-person. Counting took two days, also another first. Suffice to say, the nearly intense surge of city, school, and primary ballots the week prior was a contributing factor. As you know, we did not complete the counting until the afternoon of Wednesday, the third. Again, as I mentioned, another first. In closing that portion, this will not have been a cheap election, and I think we all knew that going into it, and I appreciate the support of the council. To date, we spent approximately eighty-two thousand dollars on the election, however, this does not include payment for workers, we pay a quarter by agreement, polling places, we'll pay half the cost of polling places, and for the county services, that is running tabulators, absentee supplies, et cetera. I estimate this to total an additional fifty-five to sixty-five thousand dollars, and of course, we'll receive approximately thirty-nine thousand dollars from the Sioux Falls School District. With all of this in mind, I am proud to announce the results of this year's elections. With sixty-seven of sixty-seven precincts reporting completion of absentee and Election Day counting, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-five ballots were cast for a total turnout of twenty-six point four percent. For at-large City Council member, Alex Jensen received thirteen thousand six hundred and forty votes, and Teresa Staley received thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-one votes. With a margin of one hundred and nine votes, Alex Jensen is declared the winner. For Northwest District City Council member, Greg Naitzer received two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five votes, and Julian Bodwan received one thousand eight hundred and twenty votes. With a margin of one thousand fifty-five votes, Greg Naitzer is declared the winner. For Charter Amendment A, there were twenty-three thousand five hundred and fifty-nine yeses and four thousand two hundred and eleven nos. By a margin of nineteen thousand three hundred and forty-eight, the amendment passes. For Charter Amendment B, there were nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty yeses and six thousand nine hundred and forty-four nos. By a margin of twelve thousand six hundred and six votes, the amendment passes. Having gone unopposed for the Southwest District, Marshall Selberg is declared elected. Having gone unopposed for the Northeast District, Pat Starr is declared elected. Alex Jensen, Greg Naitzer, Marshall Selberg, and Pat Starr will be issued certificates of election by five P M. on Thursday. Subject to your questions, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Tom. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? All right, councilors?
Mr. Mayor?
Can you say your name? We have public input, apparently, so hold tight.
So, I was elected.
Can you state your name?
C.R. Broussard. So, the County Commission told me today we have ballots, hundreds that is not accounted for. So where's the ballots? We have hundreds, and my temperature is rising, that was not accounted for. People brought in their ballots to the building, and they did not enter it in a computer system. Tell me that we had a smooth election, because nobody can tell me nothing, because I lived it and I saw it. It was the most corrupted election that we ever saw. Where is those hundreds of ballots that are missing, that the county told me today, the County Commission told me today, that we have hundreds of ballots that is not accounted for? Corruption, corruption. It's not about Alex, and it's not about Teresa, it's about the integrity of the citizens here. I'm telling you, if Teresa or anybody recalls this election, the judge will throw it out. The mayor, nobody can tell me that this election ran smooth. When you go to the polling place, and they said that you did not turn in your ballot, your ballot got lost in the mail, we cannot find it? Let me tell you, the corruption, right now, Joe Stevie walked in here at six fifty-six last Tuesday and said, I said, where is the election with Teresa and Alex going here? And they said that the county told them that they still have ballots to go through, and that it won't be until the results till tomorrow afternoon or evening. All of a sudden, after the city council meeting, they came up with them. They were going to go through all of the files, because they said that the city election files were mixed with the county. Tell me I'm lying, because I'm not. Where is those ballots at? I'm not saying Teresa could have won or lost, it's not about that, it's about the people that voted, and it's sitting either in that office, mixed up with the county, or it's somewhere that needs to be found it.
Anyone else to speak tonight on this? All right, then, let's first ask if there's questions of Tom. No questions for Tom?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, counselor?
Marshall here. I just want to take this opportunity to give kudos to Tom, give kudos to the staff, give kudos to those who came from far and wide to help count ballots as these things came in. And I have to say respectfully, some of these accusations nowadays coming in that there's corruption, I'm going to call a little bit of hooey there. It takes away from the efforts of those who put in a lot of hard work in the name of democracy, and calling and counting ballots, and doing a really solid job for the City of Sioux Falls. So I would go back to Tom and his staff and those people that helped, and tell them thank you, we owe you a very big debt of gratitude, and to those as far as being reseeded, I say I'm honored, thank you for that. But let's quiet down the talk of corruption, let's just count the votes and see where it goes, and if by chance, if Counselor Staley does do her recount, which she has every right to do, and maybe the rest of us would do the same, let's see how that shakes out. It might work out in her favor or her opponent's, but let's let democracy work out, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, counselor.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Staley.
Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, let me say that I did confirm with our County Auditor, Bob Litz, that absentee ballots were mailed out on June second, the day of the election. He said he was forced to do that according to state law. The question I would have is, we need to see the application that was received to have that ballot sent out, to see what the turnaround was, because I did hear during the course of this election campaign, that people would mail in their applications, and it would be anywhere from ten days to two weeks before a ballot was mailed back to them. So that is a problematic situation. However, I want the public to, am I being heard okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I want the public to understand the recount process. And ironically, when I went in a week before to get my, to do my finance campaign report, I asked Tom Greco about a recount, not knowing that I would be right in the midst of it. But just so the public understands the timeline, that I have, I will have five business days starting tomorrow to file my request for a recount. After that, we have three days, that would be Alex Jensen, myself, and the city clerk. We have three days to choose our representative to sit on that board, and let me tell you, I've already heard from some prominent people in our community that wanted to be my advocate, my representative on that board. And then after that, Mr. Tom Greco, our city clerk, has ten days to set that recount procedure. After that, now, and Tom Greco, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I have an email that said that this is accurate, after that ten-day period, after that has happened, that they will recount the votes, then, we will have another council meeting, I will still be a seated council member, where we will again be canvassing, approving the canvas of the votes as we are doing tonight. And so in the midst of that, we will be looking at these ballots, I'm going to be requesting we look at the spoiled ballots, those are the ones that were not accepted. I also, I want to look at all the ballots that were received on that day, after the seven o'clock deadline, and also the undervotes and the overvotes. It was a hundred and nine votes out of, as we said, about twenty-nine thousand people who turned up. I also want to state that in the midst of this two-month absentee voting time, I have never worked harder in my life than we have, and I know all of us on the council have, during this COVID crisis. And so it was a challenge, but we gave it our best. I was campaigning, I had a great energy coming at me, and by the way, I also want to say for the public, this is not supposed to be partisan, the Republicans got involved, I am a Republican, sent out a newsletter with Counselor Naitzer and Alex Jensen featured in it, I was not asked to be a part of that, but this isn't supposed to be partisan position. The city government is supposed to be neutral, we are supposed to serve everyone. But, so in the midst of this, it's a campaign like never before, I will be doing, hoping to do the recount, but my foot is on the brake right now, so I hear our city-
We lost you, Counselor Staley, you still there? All right, we've lost her. Any other questions for Tom? Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. I'll just echo some of the things that Counselor Selberg said as well, this was unprecedented. Just speaking to you, Tom, and your staff, through the time that there was so much uncertainty, we're losing places to vote, it was just a really big challenge. I am so confident in you being in this role, and feel that it went the way it did because of you in that role, because we all understand there are some challenges and some processes that certainly need to be looked at and adjusted soon. I think that there's been a lot of feedback, a lot of chit-chatting amongst county commissioners, state legislators, and so I know you will be a part of that process, and you have great feedback on how we can make this better for the people of Sioux Falls, as well as the county when those votes come in as well. So thank you for all the time that you've invested in this, I know your time is not done, I'm fairly certain this will go on for a while longer. Can you talk to me a little bit about the recount process? I would like to hear it from you, being the expert that would have to do this if this does happen, or if, Stacy, if you would like to chime in, either, because I'm certain that you probably will have to be involved at some point as well. So can you talk about the process a little bit? And then I'd also like to know what this will cost the citizens for a recount, because there's clearly a cost with it, above and beyond all the hours and manpower that are put in.
The process is what Counselor Staley described. There are certain time requirements for a request to be submitted, for individuals to be appointed to the recount board, selected, I should say, and one selected by me with the candidate's concurrence, and then, of course, ten days for me to convene the recount board to begin their process. My duty and my role under S D C L nine thirteen twenty-seven point three is to, among facilitating that process there, to deliver the ballots to be counted to the recount board. From there, the recount board will go about the process of recounting.
And that's only if it's submitted within that timeline, correct?
By five P M. on Tuesday of next week.
Okay. And what was the estimated cost of this?
I'm still working through that, I think a fair and reasonable estimate would be about fifteen hundred dollars per day. We'll need Auditor Litz's folks, who do a tremendous job on the tabulators, they'll be running tabulators, it really depends on how the recount, how the recount board approaches this, and what they, how they go about the process. So I think that's something, you know, to be seen, but I think we need to be prepared.
Thank you for that. Lastly, I'll just end with just saying congratulations to Counselor Starr, Selberg, Naitzer, and Alex Jensen for the results this evening. I know a lot of people put in a lot of hours, as well as all of the candidates that did put their name out there. Campaigns are hard, they're really hard emotionally, they're really hard putting yourself out there, as well as doing all of that work. So to all the candidates and all those that were elected, thank you for putting your name out there, it's important for the citizens to have a choice, and to have that choice be honored and heard. So thank you again to all of those, and look forward to serving with those folks. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Tom, from any of the counselors, other counselors on the phone? All right, look for a motion on this item.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Sale.
All right, we got a motion on the floor to approve this by Counselor Erickson, seconded by Counselor Sale. Discussion amongst the council, Counselor Naitzer.
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, serving in office and running for office is a huge sacrifice for your family, and that's something I want to recognize, and my wife, Jennifer, and my daughter, Olivia, are here, right behind Clerk Greco, and I want to thank them for sticking with me through all of this, and everybody who has been in this position knows what a sacrifice it can be, and how emotional it can be to walk with somebody through this, so just appreciate their support, and thank them for being here. Thanks.
Counselor Sale?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to commend all the candidates, I know what it takes to put yourself out there and run for office, and win or lose, it's a sacrifice for you and your family and all of your supporters, so thank you for all those who run, and congratulations to those that are victorious. Second point I'd like to say is that this election, with the overwhelming number of absentee ballots, and certainly came in late, probably didn't run as smoothly as some of us would like. I have had conversations with several members of the County Commission and several members of this council about doing a post-mortem when it's over, and most of us agree, once the dust settles, we're going to try and make the process better, smoother, quicker, next time it comes up, because we have elections, we'd all like to make it better. So when it's all done, this body, at least me personally, is going to try and make the system as smooth as we can. I commend those people that put themselves out there to work this, as Tom Greco has said, hundreds of people worked to make it go, so I'm committed to making a better election process next time. Thank you, Tom Greco.
Thank you, counselor. Discussion amongst the council on the phone, any counselors have any comments? All right, I'm hearing none, so seeing no further discussion, let's call for a vote on this then, please.
Councilmembers Kylie? Naitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Grecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero then. All right, any other new business, council?
If I might say, Mr. Mayor, my apologies for the ping pong on the telephone, but the thing keeps kicking me off, so sorry.
Yeah, it's hard when you're playing Xbox at the same time, I get it. Move to adjourn, Starr.
Second, Erickson.
Motion adjourned by Starr, seconded by Erickson. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
All right, adjourned, have a good night.